Testing.
Do I pull this out of the stand? Stand up or?
Uh, when I did mine, I put it up like that.
Did you? It caught it. Okay.
Head down, you know?
There you go. We just don't know we're live. Okay. Yeah, yeah, shall we last? And then I'll? And the press? Twenty-nine. It is now. We're good? Okay, council, everyone ready? Karen, you ready?
I am.
Okay. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to city council meeting for July 25th, 2022, and I would ask that you stand and join me in a prayer and also to pledge allegiance. God, we ask for your guidance and wisdom as we meet tonight. Help us to listen as others share their points of view. Give us the strength to build bridges between our differences, working together to make positive changes for our city. We ask that you watch over and protect those serving as first responders and our military around the world. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Cheryl, if you could please call the roll.
Mrs. Hatos?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Works?
Here.
Chairman Morales?
Here. All right. Council, you've all received the minutes. Are there any changes, additions, deletions? Hearing none, the minutes will stand as approved. You've also received the budget report for June, or January 1st through June 30th, 2022. And mayor, if you could give us a rundown where we stand with the budget so far?
Sure. With 50% of the budget year completed, our revenues are at 68%, expenditures 37%. So we are performing better than budget in both categories.
All right, thank you, mayor. Any questions from council? And from anyone in attendance on the budget? Okay. Tonight, we have one item under communications from Mayor Sherri L. Capello informing council of the reappointment of Becky Drybelbus and Ed Lynch Jr. to the zoning hearing board for a five-year term effective July 15th, 2022. Mrs. Drybelbus serves since 2002, and Mr. Lynch has served since 2006. And mayor, a little background?
So, you know, we really appreciate both of them volunteering to serve on this board. This is an important board. It's the lowest level in the quadri judicial system. They, like you indicated, they both served for many years, so they're a great asset to the city of Lebanon. As you'll see in the next action by council, the Pennsylvania municipality's planning code requires the government body and strong mayor to officially do formal action on any appointments for zoning and planning matters.
And any questions from the board? Or from anyone in attendance? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to resolution. And tonight, we have four resolutions. The first, number 20, confirming the reappointment of Becky Drybelbus to the city of Lebanon zoning hearing board for a five-year term effective 15, January, or July 15th, excuse me, 2022. And do I have a, I will make a motion for resolution number 20. Do I have a second? All right, the resolution has been moved and seconded. I don't know that any comment, everyone understands what we're doing here? Okay, and with that, Cheryl, if you could call the roll.
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's five, four, none against. Resolution number 20 passes. And we'll move on to resolution number 21, confirming the reappointment of Ed Lynch Jr. to the city of Lebanon zoning hearing board for a five-year term effective July 15th, 2022. And I would like to make a motion for resolution number 21. Do I have a second?
So moved.
All right, the resolution has moved and seconded. Again, this is a formality. Any questions from council? Hearing none, Cheryl, if you could call the roll.
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's five, four, none against. Resolution number 21 carries. Moving on to resolution number 22, ratifying the mayor's decision to support the joint plan of the Union Steam Fire Engine and Hose Company and the Rescue Company number four for the purchase of two pieces of fire apparatus and to provide a financial distribution to the Union Steam Fire Engine and Hose Company and the Rescue Hose Company for the purchase of the apparatus. And do I have a motion for resolution number 22?
Yes, I will make a motion for resolution number 22.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Brian. The resolution has been moved and seconded, and I believe, mayor, we need a little explanation on this item.
Sure. As the fire commissioner had indicated last Thursday at our pre-council meeting, we have a plan in place to replace some of our fire apparatus. These two will be the next two with at least one additional one to follow in the next couple of years. We're going to order both of these this year, but they probably will not be delivered until 2024. For the engine, we're looking at funding approximately 50% of the purchase, so that would be $340,000 from American Rescue Fund money. And for the ladder truck, again, about a 50% contribution, $650,000. So for both pieces, we're looking at approximately $990,000. And again, we're proposing to take that from American Rescue Fund monies. We do have money saved in the capital reserve fund. It's only a small amount, but most likely that will be used with the next particular item or items. I don't know if the fire commissioner wants to add anything?
The fire commissioner gave us a good rundown on Thursday night. I don't know if council has any questions? Okay. And I know, again, this is something the city and the fire commissioner has been diligent about planning, strategic planning for many years on this, so we thank him for his keeping on top of this. And I know he's been pushing council for last number of years to make this happen. So, thank you, commissioner. No questions from council. I'll open it up to the press. Any questions or from anyone in attendance this evening? Hearing none, Cheryl, if you could call the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sir, if you could come up to the podium and state your name and your address?
Okay, my name is Ed Johnson Jr. I represent the Union Steam Fire Engine Hose Company number one as president. And at this time, I'd just like to thank you, Mayor Capello and city council. We're giving us this opportunity to make this, make this happen. And you're right about Dwayne, he definitely put a lot of work and effort into this.
Well, we want to thank you as a volunteer fire company for also stepping up. I know in these times, it's very difficult for so many reasons, so we greatly appreciate that you keep on going.
We appreciate it also.
Yes, thank you. And are there any other questions? All right, hearing none. Cheryl, if you could call the roll?
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's five, four, none against. Resolution number 23 is so moved. Under ordinances, this evening, we have two ordinances. Bill number two, authorizing the sale of a parcel of city-owned property situated at 164, oh, I'm sorry. I missed a resolution here. Our fourth resolution, resolution number 23, thank you, Cheryl, is approving the FY 2022 annual action plan for the community development block grant program. And do I have a motion for resolution number 23?
I will make the motion to approve the FY 2022 CDBG grant program.
And I will second that. And the resolution has been moved and seconded. Mayor, if you could give us a little background there?
Sure. So our allocation for 2022 is $665,566. We anticipate $20,000 in program income for a total of $685,566. In 2021, our total for the program was $674,925. So for 2022, it's $13,317 less. We're proposing, it's pretty standard from year to year. We use some for low-income areas, as defined by the census, for police crime prevention, low-income areas for street improvements, our housing rehab and home buyer assistance program, code enforcement in our low-income areas, general administration, which we're not allowed to use more than 20% of the grant amount, and then water main improvements in our low-income areas. Again, that's a requirement of the CDBG funding, is to really focus on the low-income areas.
And as you said, mayor, this, this doesn't change much year to year, so. And do I have any questions from council concerning resolution number 23? And from anyone in attendance?
Usually from paybacks from loans that were made to homeowners or depending on the particular situation, but mainly mortgages.
Okay. And any other questions this evening? Hearing none, Cheryl, if you could call the roll?
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's five, four, none against. Resolution number 23 so moved. Now we'll move on to two ordinances this evening, the first being bill number two, authorizing the sale of the parcel of city-owned property situated at 164 North Knight Street, Lebanon, Pennsylvania at public auction. And this is the first reading on introduction. Do I have a motion for bill number two?
I would like to make a motion to authorize the sale of the parcel.
And do I have a second? Richard, thank you. The, the bill has been moved and seconded, and mayor, if you could give us some background on this piece of property?
Sure. Briefly, how we acquired this property was because of the bridge over the Norfolk Southern Railroad project. We were required to find suitable housing for a family, and we were having difficulty in locating a single-family dwelling that had five bedrooms with one bedroom on the first floor and a bathroom on the first floor for some handicapped accessibility reasons. So again, it was difficult to find something that was comparable. So one of the properties that was a part of acquisition for the bridge project was a podiatrist's office. So because of it being a doctor's offices, office and having a lot of small rooms or smaller rooms or just multiple rooms, we acquired that and renovated it into a single-family dwelling for this woman and her family. We were only required, I believe, if my recollection is correct, to own that property for approximately three years. It was either three or four years. So we're definitely past that period of time. We, back in 2013, attempted to sell the property through sealed bids. That was unsuccessful, so then we held a public auction, but we were not able to get the minimum bid that council had authorized at that time. So unfortunately, we did not sell it, but the market is continuing to be positive, although that may be turning soon. So we wanted to take action sooner rather than later and see if we could get a favorable bid on public auction.
All right, thank you, mayor. Any questions from council? And from anyone in attendance? Not used to all these people? Okay, seeing none, Cheryl, if you could call the roll?
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's five, four, none against. Bill number two so moved. Moving on to our last and our second ordinance, bill number three, amending Article 153 of the Bureau of Fire, Career and Volunteer Divisions of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lebanon, PA, and this is on introduction. And do I have a motion for bill number three?
Yes, I would like to make a motion introducing bill number three, amending Article 153.
And I will second bill number three. And mayor, a little background?
Sure. This is really to modernize the language at the fire commissioner's request. According to Commissioner Troutman, there are only two cities in Pennsylvania that still are utilizing fire commissioner instead of fire chief. The standard is, everyone uses fire chief for the most part. And it really just modernizes the language in the ordinance. And in here in our county in particular, the Department of Emergency Services has a kind of a standard language for, you know, chief one, chief, you know, deputy chief two. And so again, this is just to come in line with what's the standard in not only our county but apparently the state.
Okay. Any questions from council? And from anyone in attendance? Hearing none, Cheryl, if you could call the roll, please?
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Works?
Yes.
Chairman Morales?
Yes, that's five, four, none against. Bill number three is so moved on introduction. All right, next up on the agenda tonight, we have Dr. Diane Ford from the Vetting Zoo regarding the death of Gunner on July 6th, 2022. So, Dr. Ford, if you could please approach the mic? And Dr. Ford, if you could please give us your, your full name and then your address as well, please?
Sure. Diane Janelle Ford, VMD, 610 Meadowview Drive, Anvil, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. My name is Dr. Diane Ford, and I am a PA-licensed veterinarian and owner of the Vetting Zoo Animal Hospital. I am appalled at the July 6th events surrounding the death of Gunner. On almost a daily basis, my staff and I are faced with aggressive animals, but we all know how to correctly use a catch pole and are all educated in animal handling. There's no reason your force cannot be just as educated. Gunner was adopted from the Davis Dog Farm, who has stepped up in an openly public letter and offered to be a part of the solution, ensuring this never happens again. Davis Dog Farm, myself, and many community members support the blue, but we do not support the officers involved in the cowardly actions of July 6th. We are offering to help purchase proper equipment for the department as well as arrange proper training for your officers. Until now, no comment from the city or police department has been offered in response. As a professional in this community, I am requesting that the city come together to accept this offer. When faced with an aggressive dog, we need to edu, we need education on dog handling, common sense, and compassion. Three things the officers lacked on that day of Gunner's death. However, it is my professional opinion that Gunner was not aggressive. If he was a significant threat to the officers, he would have launched from his feet, flown toward one of them latching onto their body. This did not happen. Instead, seconds before being shot in the head, he lay down and submitted. They chose to use deadly force. Gunner had even been tased prior to being shot. Tased, rendered incapacitated, yet not one officer could secure a 50-pound tased dog. Embarrassing to say the least, despicable. As every one of you has seen, the community is not backing down. This uprising, this awakening that has developed as a result of Gunner's death is not going away. Many of us respectfully disagree with the stand you have taken so far. We call for accountability. I ask that any humane police officer with jurisdiction in Lebanon County stand up for what is right and launch an investigation if not already done so. Do not stand down. Stand up for what is right. Chief Briner and Mayor Capello, with all due respect, be the bigger people here. Set aside the brotherhood to do the right thing. Hold these three officers accountable for their actions. File a criminal complaint against them like the Pennsylvania State Police did to their own. The sooner you do so, the sooner Lebanon City will regain the respect of the community and once again stand behind you. Until then, you will most likely be on an island surrendered by criticism, blame, and maybe even downright hate. My final statement, again, with all due respect to Mayor Capello regarding your comment to the news media about the body cam footage and how it appears different from what is shown on the video, I ask you, and the community asks you, please do not further offend us by saying something so nonsensical. The community does know better. A view from one angle is the same from every angle. We want justice. Justice for Gunner.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. And council, are there any questions for Dr. Ford at this time? And mayor?
Yes, I would like to thank you for the information that you presented. I am going to share some information, but I will not take any questions due to pending litigation against the city. We understand the sensitivity of the situation, and that's not lost on us. We are sorry for the Sugearts family's loss of their pet.
Excuse me, mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, we're, we have been, we will be respectful as long as you're respectful. I will adjourn the meeting and we'll, we'll end. I don't want to do that. I know there are folks here that would like to speak tonight. City residents, I would like to speak, and I would like to give them their chance to be heard. So I'm asking, we will be respectful. We're asking for you to be respectful. So, hold.
I'm not done yet.
The mayor, the mayor has not finished speaking yet, sir. We, what will happen is we will open it up for city residents after this, after the mayor.
Well, I think we agreed that the group that's representing the Vetting Zoo had one spokesperson.
Had, and that was Dr. Ford.
And then any city resident, at the chairperson's discretion, may have one minute. That's our policy.
And I will read that policy, mayor, as soon as you're finished.
So again, we are sorry for their loss of their pet. The Lebanon Police Department handles many calls for assistance involving dogs without incident. In 2019, we tallied 444 calls for assistance involving dogs, like dogs running at large, barking, dog creating a disturbance, well-being checks for food, water, shelter concerns are the most common. Out of the 444 calls, there were 105 direct contacts with zero use of force. In 2020, there were 344 calls, 81 direct encounters with zero use of force. In 2021, there were 296 calls, 77 direct encounters, and zero use of force. In 2022, there had been 144 calls with 37 direct encounters and unfortunately, two use of force. The officers involved in the incident were trained on how to properly use the catch pole. There's more involved to that situation. We can all agree, I think, that we wish this could have ended differently, but we feel that our officers handled it properly given the circumstances. A tail that is wagging is not necessarily a sign of a friendly dog. We would welcome any resources and assistance that others would be willing to offer our officers in future calls such as this, and remind everyone to have their dogs collared, licensed, and secured so our officer's job is easier and owner contact information is readily available. And again, we thank you for your interest and your passion. And again, we're sorry for the loss of the Sugearts family pet.
Thank you, mayor. At this time, I'm going to read the policy regarding public comment at meetings of the city of Lebanon. This is for residents and taxpayers. Residents and taxpayers of the city of Lebanon are encouraged to submit a written request to be listed on the agenda no less than one week prior to the meeting. The request shall contain the name and address of the person making the request, the nature, content, and reason for the request, and a copy of any items intended to be distributed. The request shall be submitted to the city clerk for subsequent approval and placement on the agenda by the chairperson of council. At the discretion of the chairperson, groups may be requested to have one spokesperson, and comments will be limited to three minutes. For residents and taxpayers wishing to speak who have not requested to be on the agenda, comments will be accepted providing, providing time permits. At the discretion of the chairperson, comments may be limited to one minute. For non-residents and taxpayers, persons who are not residents or taxpayers of the city of Lebanon wishing to address council must submit a written request to be listed on the agenda no less than one week prior to the meeting. The request shall contain the name and address of the person making the request, the nature, content, and reason for the request, and a copy of any items to be distributed. The request shall be submitted to the city clerk for subsequent approval and placement on the agenda by the chairperson of council. At the discretion of the chairperson, groups may be requested to have one spokesperson, and comments will be limited to three minutes. Comments will not be accepted from persons who have not, who are not residents or taxpayers of the city of Lebanon unless they have submitted a written request which they have been approved by the chairperson. The contact information for submitting the request, all requests will be listed on the agenda can be, or to be listed on the agenda can be submitted to the city clerk by personal delivery to 735 Cumberland Street, second floor, Lebanon, PA, via email at ggibson, G-I-B-S-O-N, at lebanonpa.org, or even faxed to 717-639-2802. That is the policy for public comment at the meetings for Lebanon City Council. Again, Dr. Ford, thank you for going through that procedure and for your remarks this evening. At this time, I will open the floor to the press if anyone has anything. And if you do have comments, press, I would ask that you would get up and speak into the microphone if you have any questions. That's for our YouTube audience. They cannot hear unless you speak into the microphone.
Good evening, Laura LeBeau, WLBR Radio and Froggy Valley 100.1. I'm just curious to know if the city will release publicly the body cam footage from the officers involved in the Gunner situation?
So right now, at the, based on our council's decision, we're not releasing anything.
And that's due to litigation, correct, mayor?
Has litigation been filed?
There's been a letter that, you know, we issued to our insurance company, and they've opened a claim, so it's pending litigation. A list of demands were, were made, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Chris Coyle from Lev Town, just following up in that. So no lawsuits been filed. The city's received a letter from somebody acting on behalf of the Sugearts. Am I understanding that correctly?
An attorney representing the Sugearts said that they were intending to file litigation and that they gave us.
Litigation meaning a lawsuit is what I'm getting at?
Yes.
But no lawsuit has been filed yet?
They gave a list of demands that they wanted us to meet within 14 days.
Will you be making that letter available to the public? Is it a public record?
At this moment, according to our council, it is not.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the media? Okay, hearing none. I'll open it, the floor this, at this time, to any city residents that would like to speak. If you will approach the mic. And hearing none. Council, are there any, any items that you? And hearing none. Council, are there any, any items that you would like to cover this evening? Chris?
So I just have a quick comment here. I appreciate everybody that showed up this evening. Passion is, is really important in life. The fact that all of you came out for this and feel as passionate as you do about this, that's the kind of stuff that builds communities. This is a really unfortunate situation. It's terrible. There's no, there's no different way to look at it. It is. That's a fact. But the fact that even in light of that, there are folks that will band together for something that they feel passionate about is important to have in a community like ours. So even though this is an atrocious situation that we all have to go through and deal with, thank you for having passion about something you guys believe in.
Yes, Mr. Carey, if you would approach the, the mic, if you would like to address council? And if we could get your name and address, sir?
Good evening. My name is Wayne Carey, 53, East Cumberland Street, Lebanon City, PA. Most of you know me as the candy man at the market. What I want to say is, I want to address the chief tonight because I, I'm not exactly going to talk about the dog in a way, but chief, I want to tell you that on Saturday at Market, there was a man, a large man, who was extremely disorderly, aggressive, harassing, vulgar, and let's just say he was having a really bad day, all right? And two of your officers responded. I, I don't know who they were, but they were two Lebanon City Police Officers, and they were incredibly patient. And like, way more patient than 99% of us sitting in this room. And I watched from afar. Yes, I was busy. It was right down from my stand. But they were calm, and they were caring, and they were listening. And again, they were so incredibly patient. And chief, I want to thank you and your officers because they were there and they were serving and protecting not just us standholders in the market, but the customers and the people, but also that gentleman that was politely saying having a really bad day. You know, every day when I go to work, I know that there is something at the end of the day that I could have done better, or I wish I could do over. But I believe that all of us who care feel that way. And chief, I believe our officers care about what they're doing, and they're trying to do their very best. And I saw that in action on Saturday. Watching your officers on Saturday made me proud that the Lebanon City badge was on their shirts. I have a challenge for those people that are here today from our fantastic city. I love our city, and I love the people that are in it, and I love the diversity of it. So my challenge to you people tonight, and again, I know that something could have been done better, something could have, too bad we can't do it over, but it is. But you know what? Tuesday, August 2nd, for all you people in the city, is National Night Out. And I don't know how many of you have attended that before here in the city. But those of you know that I've been always involved with the Salvation Army. And that is when the Salvation Army, that is when National Night Out is when the police and the community come together. And it is your opportunity to rub shoulders, to talk to officers, to get to know them, not as somebody distant, not as somebody on a flag with blue or whatever, but as real people, real people and people who care. So that's my challenge to people tonight. Come out, August 2nd, 6 o'clock to 8 at the Salvation Army.
And Wayne, if you could, if you could wrap it up, please.
And have a great interaction with police and community. Thank you, chief, mayor, council, for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. And are there any other questions this evening? Yes, sir. If you could approach the mic? Mr. Wilson, good evening.
Cornell Wilson, 1020 Chestnut Street, second floor. I just have two questions. Do you always enforce that one-minute rule, or it happened to be for tonight?
That is, this policy is now in place. It is, it was my decision, and I am...
Start enforcing it now?
Starting, starting tonight. That's correct.
My other question is, I wasn't for a joke, I was just knowing that people sat up here and talked forever. On 10th Street, on the north side, when do you plan to get either gas or electric company or yourselves to fix the street?
On 10th Street?
Yeah, on the north side. It's like 22 speed bumps, it feels like.
It's already started. I mean, the utility work, they're doing the handicapped ramps right now, and then they'll be milling and then scratch coating.
And then they're going to pave it all, once they're finished with that?
That's a part of the 42272 resurfacing project that has been in the works for a couple of years now. Walnut Street was first, as we've talked about for many years now, and 10th Street, Ninth Street, then Cumberland.
Okay, and it's definitely 100% Washington Street and going to be on the list to be paved next year?
That is our intention.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Cornell. Any other questions? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Microphones?